We'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission for July 25th to order. And if everyone would please stand, we have Reverend Rebecca Lamar from the Government Street Presbyterian Church to do our invocation, and if you will, remain standing for the pledge.
Good morning and greetings from Government Street Presbyterian. Let us pray. Holy God, we don't even know how many times someone has stood here and invoked your name and asked for your blessing before meetings just like this one, and yet we come again today because we continue to need your guidance and your wisdom. I pray for these commissioners, knowing that you have given them the high calling of public service. You've given them the gifts that they need to serve, and so I pray that you would give them the wisdom and the direction to deal with the business at hand. I pray that you would bind them together even in times of disagreement, and pray the same for this county where we live and love, that you would bind together the varied people that are here and draw us together so that this might be a place of peace and justice and joy, a place where people live and thrive. And so we do invoke your name this morning. We ask for your blessing on the business of this day and pray for your guidance in all that we say and do. Amen.
Next, we're going to present a resolution, and it's going to be for the 32nd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I think James Flora is here with the Independent Living Center, and I think he has some people with him, so we'll go up top, I think.
the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was passed on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities and establish a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas Mobile County, Alabama, affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth by the State of Alabama and as embodied in the ADA. That was a long way up those stairs. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life, however, the full promise of the ADA will only be achieved if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. And whereas numerous organizations in Mobile County work with constituents and communities to bring forth a promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA, now therefore let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission does hereby recognize July 26, 2022, as the 32nd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Furthermore, we acknowledge the progress made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. And it's signed by County Hudson President Randall Dewitt, Merseria Ludgood, and attested to by Glenn Hodge, our administrator.
I'm Jim Flora from the Independent Living Center, one of our agencies here in town that serves people with disabilities. We're so pleased to have Mr. Turks Lesinger from Alt Point Health Systems and Mr. Teresa Bettis from Fair Housing, and probably some others that I'm missing. And I would like to thank agencies who have brought in brochures or souvenirs on the table outside. Please take some of those. And if I can find my spot here, I will not miss anybody. United Cerebral Palsy, Alt Point, Independent Living Center, several agencies, and Fair Housing. But I hope you all will take some of those as you leave. I would like to introduce a couple of folks from the Independent Living Center. And by the way, the Independent Living Center is involved with the Mobile Advisory Commission for the Disabled. Now, that was organized by the city, but we have a lot of people from the county who participate as well. We're so happy to have the support of both the county and the city in this area of people with disabilities and our efforts to include everyone. And so I'm going to introduce Ms. Eddie Ray. She is a participant in Independent Living Center activities, and she also has her own business called Access for All, where she does surveys. And Mr. Brian Johnson, Brian is the chair of our advocacy group called People for People. So I'm going to let them say a word, too.
Thank you, Mr. Flora, and for everyone here that is allowing me a few moments to speak. I know I only have a few moments, so there are just a few things I would like to say. I am a lifelong resident of Mobile. I currently live in the same house that I grew up in, and yes, I do have my own business geared towards ADA compliance consulting. The reason I'm here speaking today is both as a professional and a citizen and a person with cerebral palsy. I've spent my entire life as an advocate for people with disabilities. The ADA, as Mr. Flora has reiterated and the commission has reiterated, is a permanent federal law that affects the entire United States. That said, the 32-year anniversary is tomorrow, and there have been a lot of advancements that have been made in the last 32 years as to curb cuts, sidewalks, ramps, et cetera, and businesses Title III, which is my specialty. That said, I do feel compelled to mention that every city has something that they are supposed to review on an annual basis. This is called an ADA Transition Plan. The last ADA Transition Plan for the city of Mobile was put into active status in 2016. Unfortunately, to the best of my knowledge, it has not been reviewed since. The law dictates that it is supposed to be reviewed on an annual basis. Everyone here in this room has something they can do without changing their careers in order to see that the ADA is fully and properly enforced. As both a professional and a citizen, I highly encourage this to be done.
Thank you to the County Commission. Thank you to those who partnership with people with disabilities. On behalf of the Independent Living and our director, Dr. Peoples, we want to take this opportunity to thank you for the effort that you do in making us somebody. We are not a part of the problem. We are part of the solution. I am really pleased to be a person with a disability because I see the point that we can achieve everything we set our mind to as we join together like a football team, as we are able to have different people working with us, coaching us along the way. And we aiming for the same, to be the very best. So on behalf of people with disabilities, I would like to say, you are somebody. You are created in the image of God, so that makes you automatically somebody. And whatever you do, do your best. And we have come a long way, and I want to thank each person that partnership with the Independent Living, that partnership in making citizens one of the most opportunity to achieve their goals. There are 62 million Americans that suffer some form of disability, but together we stand and divided, we follow. So thank you for a job well done.
are from June, and is it July? Okay, so our July retirees are Tex O'Brien, David Johnson, Michael Jones. If you guys are here, we'd like for you to join us up here. Real quick. And I'll go ahead and recognize, I think, the August retirees, and I don't believe any of those are with us, but it's Yolanda Yates. She's a sergeant, and she served 27 years and nine months. And Sharon Pilgrim, who's a court reporter at the youth center, 35 years of service to Mr. Bryant? Okay. And where did you work? It isn't on here, so.
Mobile County Road and Ridge Department.
How many years?
Thirty-five years.
Thirty-five years. Thank you. Seven months.
Seven months.
Yeah. Thank you for your service to not only the county, Mobile County, but also to the citizens of Mobile County. Would you like to say something?
I had a question, if you don't mind, or do I need to make?
No, you can ask. Ask away. We may not have an answer, but.
My question was the COVID money that was given to the county for the people that worked during COVID, which I was one for 35 years. I was informed by the HR department, because I retired July 1st, that I wouldn't be entitled for the second part that was coming out, because the county held, I think, for to get interest on it.
Yes.
Or I'm assumed.
We discharged and split it.
Right. So my question would be, the retirees that retired July, would they be eligible for that or not? I was told they weren't.
Like I said, that may be a question we can't answer, but I'll find out for you. All right, thank you. All right. You got that. Thanks again for your service. With that, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. We have a couple of speakers. Our first is Teresa Bettis with South Alabama Economic Roundtable, and she has commentary related to American Rescue Act, Plan Act Fund.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Could we get your name again and your address, please?
Yes, good morning. My name is Teresa Bettis. I, my address is 602 Bellerard Boulevard, Mobile, Alabama 36606.
Thank you.
I come before this body representing the South Alabama Economic Roundtable, known as SEAR. SEAR is a coalition of community leaders from the business, for-profit, and nonprofit and faith communities within Mobile County. On behalf of SEAR, I stand in opposition to this Mobile County Commission's proposed use of the 80 million allocation to Mobile County under the American Rescue Plan pursuant to President Biden's executive order 13985. President Biden has written into law specific uses for the American Rescue Plan funding, specifically requiring advancing equity, especially for those who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequity. In other words, the federal allocation should be used in qualified census tracts or QCT. This is a rescue plan. The president has explicitly written into law for this funding a mandate of equity. His executive order clearly defines equity as the consistent and systemic fair, just and impartial treatment of all individuals, including individuals who belong to underserved communities that have been denied such treatment, such as Black, Latino, Indigenous, and Native American persons, Asian Americans, and Pacific Islanders, and other persons of color, and persons otherwise adversely affected by persistent poverty or inequality. Mobile County's proposed distribution of funds is an absolute violation of the purpose of the federal allocation. It rescues no one, and the proposed usage is not designed to benefit persons living in QCTs. Consequently, the county commission is in violation and, as a result, jeopardizes the financial standing of Mobile County if found in violation by the federal government, either through a lawsuit or other expected general investigations. The monies will have to be reimbursed to the federal treasury. In addition to pointing out the absolute violation of the proposed distribution, SEAR also points out the following. The people and citizens of this county have not been consulted, resulting in no input, and especially no input from those for whom the federal allocation is specifically designed to benefit and rescue. We understand that a citizen's survey was pro-offered through the county's website that resulted in few responses. As county commissioners, you have not fulfilled your responsibility to consult with the constituents to whom you are elected to serve and to whom are mandated by the very executive order to obtain consult. The proposed plan does not upon review go far enough in addressing citizen needs. In fact, it does not come close. One need only to look at the proposal to determine that some 41 million proposed for county administration is improper, and some 21 million proposed for other purposes is improper, and why some 18 million proposed is held in abeyance. Thirdly, the clandestine and collusive approach has been championed with outside consultants does not embrace fair play, diversity, equity, nor community togetherness. SEAR respectfully requests that this commission delay voting on a final budget allocation of the American Rescue Plan monies. The delay of the vote will allow adequate time for SEAR and others within Mobile County to work with the commission to help identify and address community priorities and assure that monies are best distributed for most consistent and systemic impact in the spirit of the executive order. As the people's legislative body vested in the power to approve the final distribution of the federal allocation, you are responsible in ensuring that the proposed expenditures are mandated under the president's executive order is legal. Currently, as it stands, it does not. That's our statement this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are representatives from Volker here. If they would like to speak next, they've signed up.
Sure.
Good morning.
Could you state your names and addresses?
Timothy Smith. I live in Jackson, Mississippi. I work with Horn LLP.
Laura Russell, from Volker, 11 Northwater Street.
A little bit out of the law. Do we, is the commission, would it be your desire for us to address the concerns of this lady, or?
You guys have signed up to speak if you want to address her concerns. Feel more than free to do so. I would appreciate it if you did.
We'll do this. So Volker and Horn, as many of you may know, teamed with Mobile County almost a year ago now to help really do a few things. Those few things include risk assessing both applicants and projects, because all of these things have to remain federally compliant, have to be federally compliant when money is allocated and have to remain so. And then, once these projects have been through a risk assessment, we do also for all eligible projects, which of the 214 that we received, I think over 90% were determined to be eligible, we have assigned a risk, a risk number. Not all projects are the same. Some are riskier than others due to the type of project, of applicant, whether they handle federal funds and things like that. And so our job really, at the end of the day, is to look at federal rules and regulations and call balls and strikes. That's what we're attempting to do. We did have a public outreach last fall where we provided a webinar, which I believe is still online, and we had a fantastic, fantastic number of projects, a lot of good projects, both in the QCTs and outside of QCTs, which the ARBA money is designed not to work exclusively in QCTs. It is designed to be of benefit when eligible at the discretion of, in this case, the county commissioners. As many of you know, the American Rescue Plan Act has many parts. The part that we are helping with, Volker and Horn, is the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. It's a unique program. The treasury is administering where counties and cities and states at the state level and the State Fiscal Recovery Fund receive direct allocations. We divided things into, or the treasury divided things into restricted categories and unrestricted categories. Unrestricted is the allowance of using revenue loss funds in a more broad way. They're not restricted to the few categories established by the treasury. So that's been our job. We are close to funding a large number of projects that are both in QCTs and outside of QCTs that have been selected by the commissioners.
Have you had an opportunity to look at our list of items that we propose to approve in the next couple of weeks?
Yes, sir.
And your opinion, are those items compliant with federal regulations?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So are, did you think they achieved the goal of equity or get us toward the goal of equity?
Yes, ma'am. We do. We received a large number of applications from around the county, many of which are from traditionally disadvantaged communities. As we sit here today, we're still working to try to, to help several entities in those disadvantaged communities make sure that they can be funded and make sure that they understand the, both the benefit and the detriment that have come, right? So there are federal strings attached with all of this. And so our job, again, is not to make selections of who gets money, but to inform the county commissioners and county staff as to, is this a permissible expenditure of the fund so that they don't get clawed back by the federal government? And if so, enlighten you guys so you do know, okay, well, this is a risky or project, but it may be worth it. It may be risky, but it may be worth it. And if it's a riskier project, what that does for Laura and I downstream is we just need, we know that we need to help oversee those recipients of funds, make sure that they understand all the rules and regulations associated with compliance. And so that's what we're here to do.
And so when you evaluate a program, you know, you pay, do you pay attention to whether it's in a qualified census tract?
Yes, ma'am.
Or not?
Absolutely.
Whose beneficiaries are?
Yes, ma'am.
And you believe that if challenged, that we will have honored the spirit and the letter of the law?
Yes, ma'am. One of the first things that we did was create a map, an overview map, of Mobile County. And the first order of business was to identify the qualified census tracts within Mobile. And then when we received our, the applications for funding, Laura and her team were able to, we literally have a map that you can see where every application emanates from and where it relates to relative qualified census tracts. Thank you, guys. We appreciate you.
No one else has signed up to speak this morning, but there is a developer here representing item number 34. Should there be any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Hodge?
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 7, 2022, and special meeting of July 11, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone here to speak for or against? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Number four was voted at the conference. Number five, approve appointment of Commissioner Merseria Ludgood to serve as District 12 Representative for the 2022 through 2023 Association of County Commissions of Alabama Legislative Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve reappointment of Commissioner Connie Hudson to serve as District 12 Representative for 2022 through 2023 Association of County Commissions of Alabama Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve a 36-month lease agreement in an amount of $137.64 per month for one Xerox copier printer from the current State of Alabama contract for the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, adopt a resolution authorizing request of the county garage to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory lists.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine was voted at the conference. Number 10, approve a recommendation of the board to review for the junk ordinance hearing held on July 12, 2022 for the following citation.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, adopt a resolution authorizing request of the sheriff's office to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory lists.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve renewal of professional services contract with CWS Group, Inc., for IT computer consulting services. for IT computer consulting services for the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirteen, approve appropriation contract with Southwest Mobile County Chamber of Commerce, any amount of five thousand dollars from District Three funds for purchase of school supplies to give away at its annual Kids' Day event.
So moved.
Second.
Number fourteen, approve application for one hundred and forty special events retail alcohol license submitted by Eminence Promotion, LLC for southeastern combat championships.
So moved.
Second.
Number fifteen, approve contract with TDA Consulting, Inc. to provide technical assistance for the home program for costs not to exceed eighty thousand per year. This contract will be for a one-year term commencing on August first, twenty twenty-two, and shall expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, provided, however, the contract shall be automatically renewable for two additional one-year terms for a total of not more than three years.
So moved.
Second.
Number sixteen, recommend, recommend award bid to BCM More &amp; Company, Inc. for revenue commission arning, awning, a total bid of one hundred and two thousand three thirty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Number seventeen, recommend award bid to Star Servicing for Theodore Oaks Dollar General HVAC system replacement for a total bid of twenty-nine thousand three seventy-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Number eighteen, recommend assignment to Goodwin Mills Kaywood, LLC for safety upgrades at Camp One Building. Work will consist of design, bidding, and project administration associated with loading dock modification. Proposed fee is seventeen thousand five hundred.
So moved.
Second.
Number nineteen, approve request for authorization to advertise for bids for Whistler Bicycle Trail Park improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty, approve lease agreement, or excuse me, lease amendment for Tanner Williams Civic and Historical Society, Inc. for Tanner Williams Park to revise the lease period to an annual beginning on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and to clarify park facility maintenance roles and responsibilities.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-one was voted at the conference. Number twenty-two, approve granting distribution facilities easement to Alabama Power for electrical service at Escatabo Hollow Park and campground.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-three, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, approve a sixty-day rental agreement for one fifty-six kilowatt diesel generator and one air conditioner from Sunbelt Rentals under the current purchasing cooperative contract, an amount of sixteen thousand five fifty-seven ninety-two for Theodore Oaks location.
So moved.
Is that for the Dollar Store as well? I mean.
That's to, uh, provide temporary coverage while we're making repairs.
To the Dollar, to the space leased by the Dollar Store?
Yes, sir.
So the total for this air condition replacement is around forty grand?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Second.
Number twenty-five, approve a maintenance renewal with SolarWinds, any amount of seven thousand nine twenty for SolarWinds Net Flow Traffic Analyzer Module for SolarWinds Network Performance Model, SL two thousand for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, adopt a sole source resolution approving onsite training with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. for ARC GIS services, an amount of sixteen thousand nine fifty for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-seven, approve amending the twenty twenty-one county commission project for River Delta to move the remaining balance of two hundred sixty-five thousand six eighty-six, fund one sixteen facilities to Mobile County Animal Shelter Isolation Kennel.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-eight, approve sponsorship agreement with Municipal Park Baseball, Inc. any amount of one thousand dollars from District Two funds to be used for travel and lodging expenses to the World Series Dixie Youth AAA Baseball Tournament in Lumberton, North Carolina.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-nine, accept two drainage easements acquired for Project Broadway Drive. Mobile County has routinely maintained these easements since they were acquired in two thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirty, approve a sup- supplemental agreement, number two, with McInnis Construction, LLC, project South Craft Highway Bridge for addition of a metal pedestrian handrail to increase the contract by thirteen thousand seven ninety-five twenty. Also add twenty-five additional working days.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirty-one, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deed from the following property owner for the following project.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Three, an amount of six thousand five hundred for Project Arlo Road.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirty-three, approve a signing contract for professional construction engineering slash inspection services for Celeste Road, safety improvements to Driven Engineering, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-four, approve preliminary and final plat of Campoy Place and preliminary and final plat of Sin Cliff Skull, uh, Chambo, and Nicholas Division.
So moved.
Can you say the name of that second one three more times?
Chambo, or what?
Second.
All right, thirty-five is going to be held over. We have not received documentation from Centigrad. We'll hold over till next meeting. Thirty-six, commission announcements and/or comments.
No one, no comments.
Okay. Thirty-seven, approve request for a motion to adjourn until August first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept report from the Mobile County Commission of the Balance of Indigestion Care Fund at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Funds available, two hundred ninety-four thousand one ninety-three seventy-two.
So moved.
Second.
And number three, approve the disbursement of Indigestion Care Fund cash receipts on July eighth, twenty twenty-two for the period April twenty twenty-second through June twenty twenty-second to the following entities in the following amounts.
So moved.
Second.
And number four, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.